Go ahead and call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Something to do today.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Poyer. Finnegan. Stout. Taylor. Galvin. Olson.
Since Amy Finnegan is absent this evening, I need to entertain a motion to appoint a secretary protep.
I will make the motion to name Chris Poyer as the secretary protep.
Is there a second? My second, okay. Roll call, please.
Stout. Taylor. Galvin. Olson. Poyer. Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Chris Poyer will be the secretary protep. At this time, it's the practice of the Board of Education to provide a place on the agenda for and welcome comments and suggestions from the public. Do we have any cards this evening?
Good evening, at this time, we do not have any public comments.
Thank you. Next, we'll move along to the educational focus item, the World Language Department presentation.
Good evening, today, I'd like to welcome Ms. Amy Robles and Ms. Katie Stran Carroll, the department heads of our World Language Departments at Addison Trail and Willowbrook High Schools.
Hi, thank you for inviting us, I'm Katie, in case you weren't sure who was whom, and this is Amy.
Hi, Amy.
It's been a little while since I have done this before, or since the last time I was able to present, and I think, Amy, this is the first time.
Yes, this is my first time.
So, we just wanted to talk a little bit about what's kind of new in the World Language Department, what our focuses are and some of our accomplishments over this past year. If you're not familiar with our course offerings, they are very similar at Willowbrook and Addison Trail, but there are some slight differences, kind of based on student interest and student populations. So each one of our buildings is able to offer a four-year sequence for German, heritage Spanish, non-heritage Spanish, and French. And just this year, Willowbrook piloted for the very first time Italian one and Arabic one. And we had, this was due to student interest, we had enough participation that we were able to offer Level Two next year, and we're looking forward to growing these programs.
At Addison Trail, we offer German, heritage Spanish, and non-heritage Spanish as well in a four-year sequence, or even further for our heritage Spanish students. And we also offer a full sequence of Italian. And then we're going to talk about some dual credit offerings. So, most of our dual credit partnerships are through College of DuPage for Spanish and German, but we have a special relationship with Dominican University for Italian, and they offer both our Italian III, IV, and our AP Italian classes as dual credit.
And we're slowly but surely trying to work on offering the dual credit at Willowbrook as well for Spanish III, which just due to staffing and their qualifications, we can't do right now, and eventually offering French II.
One of our favorite classes to talk about is Heritage Spanish Career Fluency DC. It is one of those dual credit classes we mentioned through College of DuPage. This class was designed for our heritage Spanish population, for students who came into our high school with a high level of Spanish proficiency. They traditionally start at Heritage I or Heritage II honors, depending on placement assessment, and they work their way through AP Spanish Language, sometimes AP Spanish Literature, and this is the capstone course for our seniors. It really is applicable to all students, students who are college-bound and students who are looking to go into the career field post-graduation as well. The students get to study different career cluster vocabulary throughout the year, and during semester two, they take part in the weekly job shadowing with local business partners.
And a little history behind this course, this was, this was kind of cool, but COD didn't have anything like this, and we approached them asking if they would be willing to offer it as a dual credit class. So we actually designed the course, and then COD mirrored ours and is now offering it for their own students as well. So, we got to be really hands-on in what the course content was and what the students would be doing, and COD was a really helpful partner from the beginning into the, like, launch of this course.
Part of the World Language Department are some foreign exchanges, and one of our exchanges is the GAP, the German-American Partnership Program. Our German teacher, Neelai Woodbury, has done a great job throughout the years partnering with the Goat Institute, that also forms this GAP program. And last, this past October, we hosted students from Germany, and in June, we have a group traveling to Germany. So these are some pictures from this past October when they were in town. They got to go to a Bulls game together, a host family hosted a bonfire, and then those students in the front of that classroom are the German exchange students. They do a little cultural presentations to our World Language classes that the students really love.
And we built a relationship with a specific high school in Frankfurt, which is the school that the teacher attended. So, we're sending students to the same place every year, we're working with the same teachers. So this has been a really nice program, that this is our third, I think, inception of it that we've done, and we hope to keep this running. It's a big draw for our German students.
We would be remiss if we didn't mention our Italian Sister Cities Exchange. Last year, we had, we invited and hosted a group of 17 students from our sister city, Trigiano. And last spring break, Spring Break 2024, we had a group travel there. And students still talk about it, when I see some of our Addison Trail students, they still talk about how they keep in touch with their host students on Snapchat and WhatsApp. So they're really forging these lifelong bonds from these one-week experiences that we were able to offer them, with the generous help of the Village of Addison Sister Cities, of course.
Something that we're particularly proud of is our expansion of offerings for students to receive the seal of biliteracy. Our students who are signing up and taking this test have been tremendously successful, and almost everyone who takes it earns something, either the seal or the commendation. But up until about two years ago, we were limited to some of the more dominant languages that are taught in schools in the US. But with the addition of what's called the ALTA test, we were able to expand on many of the home languages that our students are learning at home. And we've had some students who are earning it, both in the language they're studying in Willowbrook, their home language, and sometimes a third language that they're studying on their own. So this is allowing for students who sometimes don't have the opportunity to take an AP course or dual credit course to get college credit, or just to demonstrate their proficiency in their home language, which they're really proud of. It's been, it's been amazing.
We, a lot of our students in the World Language Department participate in other clubs and activities that aim to celebrate different languages or just cultures of the world. Willowbrook has had a longstanding honor society, and Addison Trail, we're launching it for the first time this year, and we're honoring new students into that program next Monday. We have Ola Clubs in both Addison and Willowbrook, which is really the Hispanic Students Society. It's, they focus on leadership, they do field trips, and they do, they throw a lot of events inside and outside of school. Addison Trail also has a German club and a multicultural club on, in the Willowbrook side of town.
Yes, and we have an unofficial Italian club as well, that's just getting started this year. One of our highlights of this year has been all of the tremendous cultural field trips that we've been able to take our students on to experience the target culture firsthand. Our French teacher has been amazing in finding opportunities for our students studying French, which you would think there's not that many opportunities in the Chicagoland area, but she's been really creative in finding ways to get students out of the building and experiencing French culture firsthand. Our Spanish IV students have traditionally had the opportunity, and still this year as well, to tour the Pilsen neighborhood, to see all of the beautiful murals, and get an opportunity to see an ever-changing De Muertos exhibit at the National Museum of Mexican Art. That's something that they talk about all the time, they absolutely adore that trip, so we've been able to do that. I think this is the eighth time we were able to go, and I know Italian has been doing a lot at AT as well.
Heritage, our Heritage II students took that same Pilsen field trip last week, and they had the best time. Our new heritage Spanish teacher went, as well as one of our other heritage Spanish teachers, and they said the kids were talking about it for days after. We also have some of our teachers take our students more on a college visit, to visit the World Language Department. Mr. Bendixon at Addison Trail has taken his Spanish IV students to visit the NIU World Language Department. And then we also have had an Italian field trip to Alamo Foods in Franklin Park, where they learn how coffee is roasted, and other Italian foods, and how that plays into the local economy.
All right.
Something else we wanted to highlight, Addison Trail, the World Language Department, applied for a DAD grant last year to kind of help offset the cost of more expensive cultural field trips that we don't like to ask our students to pay for out of pocket. So, one of the field trips, this is the field trip my class took, we took Spanish III DC students to Cafe Baba Riva in Lincoln Park, where they got to listen to a live flamenco show. This is an actual video of the flamenco show we got to see, they were amazing, and then we had an authentic Spanish luncheon. Prior to this field trip, I had students asking me, they've got tacos and pozole, right? They were completely unfamiliar with Spanish food and culture and customs, so they really did learn a lot about the culture of Spain that day. Some more recent ones, the German students got to go to the schnitzel plots, and they got to take a hands-on pretzel and schnitzel class. They learned the history of why they celebrate this way, and they got to make their breading schnitzel on the right and rolling pretzels on the left, and then they got to enjoy it for lunch.
And that's a local family, too, a Willowbrook family?
Oh, yeah. And then another local business, Lucia Rose, just across the street. They hosted our students just last Thursday to learn about pizza napolitana. Apparently, there's a whole registry you have to, that I learned about, la vera pizza napolitana. There's a website, only certain businesses who have gone through the process can be added to the list, and Lucia Rose is one of them. So the students had a great time listening to the chef and learn a bit, learning about the history and the culture behind that, and then they got to make their own, and the students really had a great time last Thursday on that. So, all of those last three field trips were funded by the DAD grant, and we wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you for giving our students this opportunity. They have really enriched our classes, and our students are thankful, and so are the teachers, so, thank you.
All right, and we wanted to end with a thank you for all the support that we've had for our department, whether it be the board or our district administration or building administration. It seems like whatever idea we come up with, we find a way to get to yes, to make things work for our students. So, our help, our heartfelt gratitude for all of your ongoing support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions?
No. But, thank you, you know, I think the, having, the opportunity for those foreign languages is important. I know my oldest daughter ended up getting a minor in Spanish, and one of her jobs was she would go to Peru once a week a month to start a fish oil plant in Peru, and she got the job because she was fluent in Spanish.
Awesome. That's wonderful.
As a chemical engineer, so I think, you know, having those opportunities for the kids to learn this, to be able to continue on, is important.
Thank you. We agree.
We just also want to appreciate tremendous work that's, that's, has been done by the staff and the effort to get the dual credit credentials as well, has not been easy. The foreign language courses at that level are very difficult, and we had a hard time finding them, and the, and the teachers really persevered. But also, it's very timely, the District Eight Foundation grant applications were due, and they'll be, actually, they'll be deciding those tonight, and so it was good to hear.
Wow. What do you know?
We appreciate the staff's effort in putting those applications in.
I have more pictures if you need any, just call.
And so it was very timely, but just tremendous work, fantastic work, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for having us.
Okay, then we'll move along to item six, which is the motion to establish the consent agenda. The board members may request to move a consent agenda item to discussion or action portion of the agenda. These are all routine matters that have been discussed or reviewed by the board.
I move to establish a consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Stout. Taylor. Galvin. Olson. Poyer.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Taylor. Galvin. Olson.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Stout. Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we have item eight A, for the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of certain educational support personnel and elimination of educational support positions.
The administration is recommending to the board the adoption of the resolution for notice and honorable dismissal of the following employees and the elimination of educational support positions. Specifically in this resolution, there are three areas that it focuses on. One is the educational support employment position of building assistant district office receptionist is hereby eliminated in its entirety, effective at the end of the workday on June 30th, 2025. And the educational support position of building assistant subcoordinator is hereby eliminated in its entirety, effective as of the end of the workday on June 5th, 2025. Those positions have been reassigned in terms of our subcoordination at a district-level position that we have recently posted, as well as the district office position is, receptionist is going into a new position that will also be the learning services and support our transition program here. Additionally, the hours of Mildred Martinez, an educational support personnel employee, are hereby reduced from 12-month educational support employee to a 10-month educational support employee, effective at the end of the day of the workday on June 30th, 2025, as a result of the board's decision to eliminate the position of district assistant district office receptionist. And the third component of the resolution is that Mr. Greg Karas, educational support personnel employee within the category of technology support specialist, is hereby honorably dismissed from employment in the, in the district, effective as of the end of the workday on June 30th, 2025, by reason of the board's decision to decrease the number of educational support personnel employees employed by the board or reduce the number of hours worked by such personnel and/or discontinue some particular type of educational support service.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution of notice and honorable dismissal of Greg Karas and the reduction of hours for Mildred Martinez and the elimination of certain educational support positions.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Galvin. Olson.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Stout. Yes. Taylor. Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we have item eight B, the spring disposals.
In accordance with established practice, it is recommended that the administration be authorized to dispose of, in the best interest of the school district, the items on the attached list, which are either no longer serviceable nor needed. Items are first offered for intra-district transfer. Secondly, they are offered to other taxing bodies and employees via a sealed bid process. If any capital equipment items are deemed to have value exceeding $500, they will be advertised for sale to the public. Absoluted or broken technology items are disposed of through a source that provides certification of environmentally legal disposal.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to dispose of listed equipment and materials in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Olson.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Stout. Taylor. Galvin. Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we have item eight C, which is the appointment of the school treasurer.
In accordance with Board Policy 2110, we are recommending that Ryan Damiraki be appointed to serve as school treasurer for the 2025-2026 school year.
I entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Ryan Damiraki to serve as the school treasurer for the 2025, 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Poyer.
Yes.
Stout. Taylor. Galvin. Olson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we have item eight D, the DuPage Area Occupational Education System, DAOS Board Apprehension.
So we, in District Eight, we are part of the larger cooperative of the DuPage Area Occupational Education System. This is the cooperative that oversees the Technology Center of DuPage, as well as the other vocational and career technical education funding. And, so we each year have to appoint one of our, one of our administrative team to be the, the designate, the designee, the appointee, to serve as, as part of the Board of Directors for DAOS. So it's our recommendation that I, that I, as the superintendent, continue to serve in this capacity going into the 2025-2026 school year.
I entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Dr. Jean Barbenante as DuPage High School District 88 Board Representative to the DAOS Board of Directors for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Other than we should give Jean a break? No. Roll call, please.
Stout.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we have the overnight field trip for, request for Willowbrook.
So there is a request for an overnight field trip. By Board policy, the Board has to approve field trips that are beyond a specific mileage distance. And so we have the, the students at Willowbrook going to Orlando, Florida to compete for the Business Professionals of America national competition, to take place from May 7th through May 11th.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Willowbrook High School Business Professionals to travel to Orlando, Florida, Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, through Sunday, May 11th, 2025.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Stout. Taylor. Galvin. Olson.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we'll move along to discussion items. The first is the medical and dental insurance program renewal for 2025-26.
All right, good evening. We received the final medical and dental insurance premium renewal information for the coming 2025-26 school year from the Educational Benefit Cooperative, EBC. The medical plan rates for the PPO plan will be increasing 6.9%, and for the HMO, the rate will increase 5.2%. The dental plan rates are increasing 7.1% for the PPO and remaining the same for the HMO. The majority of our staff, about 91%, elect the dental PPO plan. EBC's background is a cooperative of 134 Illinois school districts, and the annual performance of the cooperative continues to be quite stable. The renewal pricing process reflects a two-step approach in which the overall EBC pool loss ratio is determined, and then individual school district member experience is compared to that. The tiered pricing structure is applied, depending on whether we are at, above, or below the average. The renewal terms for the EBC pool medical PPO plan reflected an average loss ratio of 104.1%, which resulted in the premium increase of 6.9%. While our loss ratio was slightly below average at 101.1%, we still fell within the pool's average loss band of 102% to 108.1%, so we have that 6.9% premium increase. For the medical HMO plan, the EBC's pool reflected an average loss ratio of 100%, which resulted in a premium increase of 5.2%. Our loss ratio was below average at 97.5%. However, we did fall within the pool's average loss band, which was 96.1% to 104.0%, and therefore, we have the 5.2% premium increase. The final insurance coverage premium renewals include the life and AD&amp;D insurance policy, which reflects no change of the rates through the following, next school year, with Reliance Insurance. In addition, we had already secured pricing for disability insurance through next year with Reliance as a standalone policy for the district. We are preparing to release this information to staff during the upcoming annual open enrollment period, the first two weeks of May. We continue to work closely with the Employee Insurance Committee to promote wellness activities that will benefit the individuals and their overall benefit plan. We coordinated the annual onsite flu shot service, as well as the wellness evaluations at each school. This year, we also again participated in the biometric health screening via Empower Health, and we had 258 participants participate. This is about 27 more participants than we had the year prior. Empower Health provides each participant a comprehensive health assessment based on their individualized results. And then lastly, this is the fourth year in partnering with Navigate Wellbeing for the exercise challenges, and we are seeing an increase in participation. We will continue to work with the Insurance Committee to increase participation in the years ahead.
Any questions? It's really not a bad increase.
No.
I'd take that.
Yep. Typically, when we are doing our forecasting for medical rates, we're shooting for about 7%. And this year, our weighted average was 6.1%, so trending below where we forecast.
Okay, next, we have the new textbook request.
All right, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to bring to the board the new textbook request for the 2025-26 school year. The attached table in your packets provides a list of the new textbooks that are being requested for a grand total of $58,632. Just as a reminder to the board, students are not asked or required to purchase their books, rather, the fee is rolled into their registration fee, and next year's registration has stayed the same as last year at $475. If you'd like to view our textbook lists, those are maintained by the school bookstores. So if you go to our each school's website, ATHs, duPage88.net, under, and then click on ATHs or WBHS, click on the Services tab, and then you can view the textbooks there.
Okay. And then next, we have the tenure recognition.
It is recommended that the board recognize and congratulate the following 27 teachers who will be moving to tenure status beginning with the 2025-26 school year. We are excited that the staff members have demonstrated the qualities that we look, look for in our staff members in the areas of curriculum design and implementation, the best instructional strategies, classroom management, and overall building positive and influential relationships with our students. We look forward to encouraging their future growth as educators in District 88. Jocelyn Antonio, Lucas Brennan, Kristen Corper, Jennifer Corona, Carrie Grady, Jacqueline Hartman, Joseph Helton, Jessica Hilario, Isabel Juvan, Megan King, Nina Cotari, Jenna Kragel, Christina Quo, Nadia Malik, Rachel Manley, Liam McKenna, Terrence Miller, Yarizet Ocampo, Cynthia Ochoa, Kristen Raith, Osvaldo Rodriguez, Giselda Sanchez, Angelica Sierra, Gabriela... Gabrielle Sinagra, Daniel Spain, or Danielle Spain, Isabel Witt, and Fatin Zaid. Congratulations to all those staff members who will be moving on to tenure for the next school year. The list is a little bit longer this year than typical years, as there's been change in the tenure rules with staff who were hired before July 1st of 2023 compared to those hired after July 1st of 2023.
Okay. Thank you. As noted in the agenda, we have the four-year items, and move on to school recognition.
On behalf of Addison Trail Principal Jack Andrews and Willowbrook Principal Dr. Daniel Kraus, just want to share some information from their buildings and their staff members with some of the events and happenings going on at Addison Trail and Willowbrook. So, I'll start with Addison Trail. This past week, both buildings celebrated National Assistant Principals Week by recognizing our incredible team and providing an opportunity for staff to stop down and say thank you and eat some donuts and cupcakes. Last week, both buildings also celebrated National School Library Month with different activities, including an author-in-the-house visit from Samira Ahmed and other fun events. Addison Trail hosted a white coat ceremony today to celebrate students who have completed the three biomedical science classes in the Project Lead the Way pathway. Students were given a white coat to represent their completion of the courses, as well as a red stole they can wear during graduation to signify the success. Some upcoming events, parents and students should have received information this evening regarding tomorrow's ACT and pre-ACT administration. Students in grades nine, 10, and 11 should be in attendance, and seniors do not need to attend tomorrow. We wish all students the best of luck on the test. Tomorrow evening, we will host our Spring Honors Concert I, and on Wednesday, we will host our Spring Honors Concert II. A friendly reminder that we have a non-attendance day on Friday, April 18th. In athletics, spring sports continue to find success on the field, court, and track. We look forward to some warmer weather as the season continues. Thank you for your continued support. And at Willowbrook, a reminder about ACT testing. They will have school-wide testing for grades nine, 10, and 11 tomorrow, April 15th. Students in grades nine and 10 will take the pre-ACT, and grade 11 students will take the ACT with writing. In FCCLA, students, congratulations to eight members of the FCCLA team who competed at this weekend's state competition. We will know the results soon. College and Career Week took place from April 7th to 11th, and the week included a resume workshop, the ASVAB, which stands for the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test, a skilled career and military fair, a college fair, career presentations for more than 20 career professionals, many of whom are graduates of District 88, and a hands-on workshop to explore careers using virtual reality. In athletics, spring sports continue, with all programs having success. Some important upcoming dates, again, the ACT test will be tomorrow, April 15th, and then tomorrow evening will be the WPO's Willowbrook Scott Talent Show. On April 16th, Willowbrook will host its freshman awards. On April 17th, will be the Outstanding Student Breakfast. On April 18th, no school. From April 22nd to 25th, will be Willowbrook's Art Show. On April 22nd, Willowbrook will host its Evening of Honors. On April 23rd, will be the NHS Induction. And on April 24th, Willowbrook will host the West Suburban Conference Sports Spectacular. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any board member reports? Superintendent report.
Just two quick things. On Monday, the 21st, April 21st, will be our next District Parent Update meeting. This is a meeting that we hold online, and it's for the all parents in the district. This meeting as well, we have the incoming freshmen or current eighth-grade parents invited. And this is just a time to hear of the more kind of centralized district updates, things that are new and up and coming, and updates on things that have been in progress. So, we encourage all parents to attend. You should get an email invite tomorrow that will go to all parents, and there'll be a link then to register for the meeting. And then, you'll get a link for the Zoom meeting once you register. Also, today was the launch of an attendance initiative that we have been working on for the last several months, and it involves every Monday, parents getting an email from the district with an update on students, on their students' attendance. So, it is kind of color-coded, red, yellow, green, in terms of levels of potential concern. There's a total number of periods absent that is included on that, as well as contact numbers if parents would like to follow up, certainly if there's anything that might be an error, but also to get follow-up information on the students' absences, as well as potential information for interventions and supports as well. So, this is a new initiative, so we ask everyone's patience with that, but just another way to be communicating with parents related to attendance, which is of critical importance. We cannot stress enough how, what an impact regular attendance has on student achievement. And so, we are, you know, here to support students and families with helping students get to school more regularly. So, for those questions, please feel free to reach out to the Building Administration or over here at the District Office. Erica Craig is the Assistant Superintendent for Student Programs and Services, or certainly to the Superintendent's Office as well. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have a place on the agenda for any public comments on the above listed items.
Good evening. At this time, we have not received any public comments.
Okay. Thank you. Then, we'll move along to announcements. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, April 28th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the District Boardroom located at the District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois 60101. And the following Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, May 5th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the District Boardroom located at the District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois 60101. At this time, it entertain a motion to move into closed session for purpose of a, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine validity. However, meaning to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that's subject to the local government wage increased transparency act may not be closed and should be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this Act 5 Eleanor Compaugh Statute 120/2C1. And b, a collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salaries, schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes. Motion's approved, and we'll move into closed session.[1082.97]
Okay, we recommended open session. Recall please.
Kane.
Here.
Stout?
Here.
Poyer?
Here.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
There's action that's suggested by the closed session. I don't turn a motion.
Yeah, it's okay.
Would the Department of Education approve the recommendation for termination of employee number 0414025?
Sergeant.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none. Recall please.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, I don't turn a motion to adjourn.
Sergeant.
On their side?
Aye.
All opposed and nay. I say it and the meeting's adjourned.